Well, if you want to, we can move it back, but we had it set up so that we had a front desk and then we had to move the desk down. We came on the table and then we moved it.
I want to make sure people can hear. Yeah, well, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think I'd like to call the meeting to order and the do is stand and do a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, which is our republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is a meeting of the Board of Appeals for the Town of South Berwick. And the first thing we're going to do is we're going to introduce ourselves and we're going to start down to my left.
I'm Robert Dieter with up Warren Pond Road, South Berwick.
I'm John Clausner, Highland Avenue in South Berwick.
I'm Jeff Clark. I live on Cole Lane, South Berwick.
Sam Plinkstrom, Main Street, South Berwick.
Also with us tonight is an attorney representing the Board of Appeals and an attorney representing the Town of South Berwick. The format tonight is going to be that initially the applicant, Mr. Bayes, is going to point to speak. The town CEO will then have an opportunity to also speak. We'll then turn it back to the applicant to respond to any issues that the town CEO has raised. And then once again, after Mr. Bayes has had a second opportunity, the CEO will again have an opportunity to address address the board. After that, we'll open the floor up to other public members who might want to speak. As a point of order tonight, I want to allow everybody sufficient time to speak and get their point of view across. However, we want to be sure that the materials presented are material to the 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 issues that we're speaking about tonight and they're not unduly repetitious. I also want to remind folks that we're talking about the facts of this case. We're not here to talk about personnel issues. And finally, all questions that you think you, either the applicant or the public may have, should be directed through the Chair of the Board rather than, for instance, the code enforcement officer or attorneys or other, every other, any other members of the of the public who might be in attendance. You just want to be able to control things. So if you've got a question, it should come through me and then we'll discuss how it gets the answer. Right, we're here on an appeal by Stephen Bayes. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This address is 160 Dunkwood Road. The issue at hand is map five lot 23. The applicant will talk a little bit about more about the application itself. First matter, I have to ask if any of the board members had a conflict of interest that would exclude them from participating tonight. Any conflicts? Okay, no conflicts of interest. So we have four members, which means that any decision will be, needs to be made by a majority vote of the four and that would be four, that would be three members of the board. As far as jurisdiction goes, I believe that we do have jurisdiction. The board has the authority to review decisions made by the town CEO. If anybody has any issues with that on the board, let me know. Okay. And then finally, we have an attorney sitting with us. Perhaps Leah, you could introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Leah Rachin. I am an attorney from Drummond Woodson and I'm here on behalf, or I should say, to represent the zoning board of appeals with any questions they may have.
Thank you. We, as a board, are going to just cross our, cross our p's and dot our i's by voting to have Leah represent the board and see then. Would somebody make a motion?
A motion, Leah represents the board.
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody, it's an agreement that we will represent us. That matter taken care of. Mr. Bayes, why don't you, you can either stand or given the the small setting here, you can stay seated if you'd like to do that also.
Sure, if that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Zoning Board of Appeals, for hearing this and volunteering your time. I submitted this appeal based on four items on the on the building permit number 24-002 that was issued on January 4th, 2024. The first item is that the permit approved an accessory dwelling unit that had not been applied for. The second item approves an expansion of a non-conforming use. The third, building permit application was not complete. And the fourth, property owner is not in compliance with 140-67.3, the performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical cannabis registered caregivers. I won't read through every word I wrote, but I'll touch on the each of those four topics. This starts back a little while ago, back on October 27th, 2022. A marijuana cultivation and processing building located at 161 of Dunkwood Road was destroyed by fire. On about December 7th, 2023, construction appeared to begin at 161 of Dunkwood Road. I inquired with the town code enforcement office and became aware that a permit had been issued in 2022 for the construction of a 66 by 24-foot outbuilding. That had been issued in November 22nd, 2022. When I inquired in December, that permit had now been expired as it had exceeded one year point, no construction had begun. Shortly after I had inquired, a new building permit was issued, 24-002, for January 2024, and that's the permit that I am filing the appeal against. The first item that I mentioned was a, the permit had a 632 square foot accessory dwelling unit approved on that permit. However, no part of the permit had applied for or requested an ADU. Additionally, on the permit, block 19 showed that there was already two dwelling units on the property. My understanding is that that has been remedied by a new permit being issued, but I will come back to this, the ADU issue. To be clear, my, my issue is not with having an ADU. It's just that it was approved by the CEO but not part of a of an application for it. The second item, CEO McCabe is not authorized to approve the expansion of a non-conforming use. And this really gets to the, what I think is the meat of the issue. The, on the application for the building permit, block 15 describes as far as what the permit's for, simply says rebuild of existing building after a fire damaged the building. So being that is the only information shared on the application. You, you can only assume that the intention is to rebuild a medical, excuse me, a marijuana cultivation. No other use information is provided on the application or with the materials. As many of you know, adult-use marijuana cultivation or adult-use retail stores are not allowed in South Berwick. Medical marijuana cultivation and growing facilities are not allowed in the R5 zone per the land use table. They are allowed in the industrial zone. Medical marijuana or medical cannabis cultivation activities are allowed in accordance with 140-67.3, the performance standards and local license, licensing requirements for medical cannabis caregivers. And that has square foot limitations on it. Under 140-67.3 and for the square foot limitations, a cannabis caregiver home occupation shall be carried out fully within the principal building or within a building or other structure accessory to it and shall utilize at a maximum no more than 700 designated square feet per licensed caregiver. Or if there's two, that can be up to 1,200 square feet. Prior to the cultivation buildings that burn on this property at 161 of Dunkwood Road, there's a medical caregiver retail store that's 256 square feet. There's a second, there's another building that's 384 square feet. And the two buildings that burned combined are approximately 816 square feet for a total of 1,516 square feet of you know, of structures that are currently being used for medical marijuana activities. So, you know, what I looked at in my appeal is the, the ordinance only allows a max of 700 square feet, approximately 800 burned. You know, had already been exceeded that at the 1,500. So my issue is that this was a non-conforming use prior to the fire, that the only amount, in my opinion, that should be allowed to be restored is the amount of square footage that was lost to the fire. And I explained through here, you know, where, where the square footage of those buildings come up from, basically from our assessment records and what, what the property owner is paying taxes on. Per 1, per 140-5B3B, the owner may restore that lost non-conforming use within two years. However, the non-conforming use shall not be expanded. And I quote here our ordinance, again, it may be restored but cannot be expanded in area. Upon the initial permit that the CEO had issued back in November of 2022, there's evidence that CEO McCabe had recognized there was a non-conformance issue. She addressed it in the conditions of the permit and stating may rebuild in the same footprint. However, did approve in that permit a 24 by 66 square foot building. So I think my, my impression is there was a recognition of a non-conforming use that had to be controlled here, but that didn't seem to carry on with the actual the actual what was approved in the permit, the size of the building or in this, the newest permit. By approving building permit 24-002, the newest one, I feel CEO McCabe approved a significant, significant expansion of a non-conforming use, the marijuana cultivation and or activities from the 816 square foot lost to the fire to approximately 4,752 square feet. And that's the total square footage of this new building, a basement and the two floors. For any expansion of a non-conforming use requested, CEO McCabe must refer the building permit app application to the planning board. That's per 140-5C5. This was not done. If CEO McCabe had intended to not allow for the expansion of the non-conforming use, it was not documented nor listed as a condition of the approved building permit. The requirement for restoration of the non-conforming use within two years of the fire is also not specified as a requirement in the permit. I, from CEO McCabe's materials that she provided to me Thursday, I think she will, I believe she will talk about the requirements under the main state marijuana laws that allow a 500 square foot, up to 500 square foot mature plants, up to 1,000 square foot for immature plants as far as their total cultivation. When the town developed our current performance standards, there were many months of workshops with the planning board, with the public, with the with the town counselors looking at these aspects. The main state laws, the cannabis laws also allow the municipality to regulate caregivers. And that was discussed as well. Attorney Sosser, I believe, was part of that and probably even reviewed our current ordinance before it was, you know, authorized by the town council. So I'm, I guess we'll figure out tonight why this difference in do we follow our ordinances or do we follow the maximum allowed under the state law? I see that as, well, the town allows a maximum speed of 75 mile an hour, but we don't have any 75 mile an hour in roads. That doesn't mean we should just magically be allowed to have it. But that will be, I'm sure with the attorney's assistance be resolved. Number three, CEO McCabe accepted, accepted and approved a building permit application that was incomplete. This may be more of an administrative issue, but I list here, you know, the, the items on our building permit application that were not completed. In my opinion, it's the CEO's duty under our ordinances that require these items to have these items complete, to have them submitted with an application before she even starts the review of any building permit. I think the easiest job a CEO has is slide the application, application back across the counter and say it's not complete. However, in this application, you know, a number of items were missing that I think are, are crucial, you know, as far as not only what the use is, describing the use, putting the other uses that are on the property, you know, documenting them for the CEO to review, as well as the safety of the structure. When you're building a structure like this, this size, or if you're putting in an ADU, even though it wasn't included in the application portion, you know, there are aspects of safety and things that I think are important that a CEO reviews. And you'll find on the application, nowhere is the word cannabis or marijuana. You know, that seems to be purposely left off, so there's not any evidence of what this, what the intended use of these buildings are. A fourth and final thing, applicant is not in compliance with 140-67.3, which are the performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical cannabis registered caregivers. Per 14070-E, it states, no building permit for a building or structure or any lot shall be issued except to the owner of record or his authorized agent, nor unless the proposed construction or alteration of a building or structure shall comply in all respects within the provisions of this chapter. My view, this licensing is a provision of the chapter 140. In my view, you know, it's required that anybody that's going to continue in this business follows the rules of the town, follows the licensing requirements and therefore can move forward with what's allowed under the ordinances. My conclusion, you know, I am, it's not clear in a butter to this property. Family and I are directly impacted by the multiple marijuana activities that are on this site now. If you haven't been up there, you know, please come by and see the, you know, the expansion of the site and the store that's in operation till midnight. And the building we're talking about in question is probably 50% or more built. You know, I think they were adding the second floor this, this past weekend. So this is not a question about should this move forward? This is moving forward. It's how we deal with what's allowed, the allowed uses in the building. If the permit is, is considered valid, as is, it provides the property owner with town approval of a nearly, up to nearly 600% expansion of the lost area marijuana cultivation and activities, a non-conforming use in the residential R5 Agamanicus Research District. It's requested that the, the board find that CEO McCabe was in error approving and issuing building permit 24002 and find it void. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have a question for Mr. Bayes at this point?
Hold on a moment.
Jennifer?
I'm going to just give a very brief introduction and Jenny's going to go over what she did. Initially, the firm, so my name is Phil Saucier, I'm with the firm of Bernstein Sure, represent the town. Just to be clear, is that on now? Okay, sir. Phil Saucier, Bernstein Sure, representing the code officer in this particular hearing. And I just wanted to kind of focus it a little bit and then turn it over to Jenny. So I think one thing that's important to remember is that this is an appeal of a particular building permit for a structure. It's, it wasn't a use approval of any kind of that kind, as it says on here. One thing I will say is, and I agree with Mr. Mr. Bayes, is that any use that goes on will still have to comply with your ordinances. All right. So, but at this point, what was issued was a building permit for a structure. What we do know, and it sounds like he does want to use it for a caregiver, partially for a caregiver grow facility, but partially for an ADU. But to the extent that it's used as a caregiver grow facility, he'll have to comply with the ordinances and that includes, Mr. Bayes rightly pointed out that there's a, Town Berwick, South Berwick adopted a medical cannabis registered caregiver licensing ordinance. So that's a separate process. You apply to the town planner. It goes up to the town council. The applicant has to comply with the provisions of that ordinance. That's not what we're here for tonight, the way I read the application. But I agree that it would, that it would apply once it's up and running and the disposal to use it for that purpose. The second is more of a clarification. It appears that, and Jenny noted this in her memo, is on the ADU issue, that the ADU is approved by subsequent building permit, which was not appealed. So that was, I believe, I just wrote it down, but it's a building permit 24-13. So that, I think that's not being appealed tonight. The, the application specifically to appeal building permit 2402. So I think there is, there was a permit for that. Jenny will get into that process, but I, my, my perspective, that's not on the table tonight because it wasn't appealed. And then finally, and I think I sort of addressed this, but it's, it gets to this issue, non-conformance. Again, there's a licensing requirement. That's, that's a separate regulatory regime from the building permit. You have to comply. The use itself, and this is just more of a clarification, the use itself, from my perspective, you can ask your, your board attorney, is not a non-conforming use in the sense that caregivers are allowed to grow as long as they comply with the licensing requirement. It's not a use that's regulated under your use table, for example. Instead, what is regulated are medical marijuana cultivation facilities, which is a specific type of use that is three or more caregivers operating at a location that's not that caregiver's primary residence. And those are only located in certain districts. So at least from my understanding, to the extent that this will be used for caregiver growing, caregiver growing itself is not per se a non-conforming use. It's a, it's an allowed use in town. And in fact, you would not be able to permit it, to not permit it. Because the state law, although the state law does allow municipalities to regulate caregivers, you are not permitted to prohibit caregivers or limit the number of caregivers in your community. So, and it doesn't show up in your use table either way. So I, I just, those are three comments. I think I might circle back after Jenny, but Jenny's going to go through her process, how she looked at this.
Thank you, Phil. My understanding is, you said there's two permits issued. One is for a 24 by 60 structure. And then the second permit issued at the end of January for a 784-foot ADU. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to pass these down to the board. There's a test of copies of our new ADU ordinance in town that took effect on December 12th. So those can go to the chair. Yep. And then I'm just going to pass these down if you guys, the board members would like to take one. Jeremy Clark, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So on January 3rd, 2024, Code Office received a call from a contractor requesting a footing inspection and a bed bottom inspection for a subsurface wastewater disposal system here in South Berwick at 161 Dunkwood Road. The contractor was advised that the building permit issued 11/22/22 had expired on 11/23/23 and the office had sent a letter advising the owner to call into the code office at that time. The code officer never heard from the owner. During that phone call, the contractor was advised that the new building permit application and a subsurface wastewater disposal system application would need to be submitted before any inspections would be taking place and they needed to stop working until those permits were flagged in the system. Not even an hour later, on January 3rd, 2024, the code enforcement officer received both new building permit application and the subsurface wastewater disposal system application. Upon submission, the contractor and the code enforcement officer had a brief conversation about needing the layout of inside the buildings as strong as received for the shell of the building. The contractor verbally told the code officer that first floor would be a registered caregiver grow. According to OCP, one registered caregiver can have 1,000 square feet of canopy or 60 immature plants, 500 square feet of canopy or 30 mature plants. At this time, there is one registered caregiver for 161 of Dunkwood Road according to Office of Cannabis Policy. The contractor verbally told the code enforcement officer that a 632 square foot accessory dwelling unit would be upstairs on the second floor of the new building along with some residential storage areas. The code enforcement officer agreed to let the building and homeowner have until January 31st, 2024, to submit the final layout of the ADU. The homeowner gave his builder or contractor verbal consent to add the ADU to the building permit. However, only property owners can add and delete on a physical application without a letter from the contractor to act as any kind of acting agent. The code enforcement only allows the property owner or their acting agent, which would be in writing, to write on the applications physically. Both permits went under review that afternoon and were approved the next morning on January 4th, 2024. On January 30th, 2024, at 3:30 PM, the property owner for 161 of Dunkwood Road came into the code enforcement office to bring the ADU layout, a letter, attention code enforcement officer, which is in your packet, and a new building permit application for an ADU as it had increased inside from 632 square feet to 720 square feet. Under the ordinance that went into emergency, the emergency ordinance that went into effect on December 12th, ADUs can be attached or detached and may not exceed 750 square feet. So he's in compliance for that. 161 Dunkwood Road is a 20.13 parcel located in the R5 zone in South Berwick. The frontage for this property is 657 feet. The accessory, the building permit issued 24 two meets the dimensional requirements for that zone and meets all applicable building codes and standards for that structure. The property owner may have a building, an outbuilding that size. Accessory dwelling units are allowed in any parcels in any zone where there are single family dwelling on the same parcel. I think single. What did I do that?
No, I was going to, yeah, when you get to that one, I'll jump in. No, I was gonna, yeah, when you get to that one, I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
Uh, the next, the next one, as I, as I noted during my, uh, introduction is, uh, this, the next sentence is correct that under state law, caregivers can grow one thousand square feet of canopy, but under your licensing ordinance, when it comes time to actually start growing, um, uh, individual has to get a license and there are subject to requirements in here, which is seven hundred square feet.
Um, use of the building is an enforcement issue. It's not on the building permit, doesn't need to be. Um, it is typical to get ad-built plans after the building goes up, especially for residential or commercial uses. We get them a lot. Um, sometimes layout or changes that come up during the building process. The ADU being added to the permit has been resolved and can be found under building permit twenty-four thirteen. Also, I spoke with the Office of Cannabis Policy today. Um, I do have another copy to hand out to you guys, but, um, property owner of one sixty-one of Dunkwood Road is, um, currently in good standing with O C P to cultivate, manufacture, or transfer to patients. Um, he's active until April sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. He will need to apply for a new license and as of September, and he has, he has to do that thirty days prior to April sixth, so we're coming up on that deadline. Um, as of September, two thousand and twenty-three, the local authorization forms that were established, when they renew, renew the local authorization, authorization form will be required. So here in, um, South Furrick right now, in the last couple of months, we've been getting local authorizations for storefronts or cultivations. And, um, that's something that the O C P requires they hadn't required previously. Um, so Miss, the property owner at one sixty-one of Dunkwood Road didn't have to submit that form to the code office, but now we'll have to on the new issuing of his license. So have a full picture of what's there.
Jen, it's my understanding, based on what you said previously, that all, all that is immaterial at the moment. And all we're focusing on is a building permit for a sixty by twenty-four building and a, an amendment to that original permit to, uh, provide for a larger ADU.
That's right.
So we're not dealing with marijuana issues.
But, right, I just wanted to make everything clear what we have in front of us. And also I just wanted to read a letter, um, that was submitted on January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four from the, um, property owner. And that is part of my memo that you guys have received, but attached, please, attention code enforcement. Attached, please find a sketch for the ADU, which I've increased in size from six hundred and thirty-two square feet to seven hundred and twenty square feet. I know my builder verbally adds the building permit, added to building permit, sorry, twenty-four two, however, it was determined it was the wrong size. Attached, you will find a new building permit for the ADU in the correct size. Please let me know when the building permit is ready for pickup. Thank you for giving my contractor the additional time to get the floor plan for the ADU finalized. In regards to my caregiver license, I will not be providing a layout as I'm protected under O C P regulations. Respectfully yours, Eric G. Bergendahl, R M. And you will see that the floor plan for the ADU is also in the packet along with the storage for that second floor residential space.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
I think this one's.
Board members have any questions?
Um, how, how, um, is the code official supposed to determine the, um, path forward through permitting if they don't know the use?
Uh, we may bolt up. So I generally, correct me if I'm wrong, you would need to know the general use um, for a building permit so that you know, so that it's not gonna be something that would not be allowed from a use category. So for example, um, retail is not allowed, general retail in the zone. So if the application was for a retail building, then that would obviously be kicked off at the, at the building permit phase. Um, in this case, again, what we're hearing is we knew, she knew generally it was for medical marijuana growing, which, uh, is not a, is, is a permitted use in this area. Again, now, in the extent of how it's used and regulated, the licensing ordinance, you would take care of that and they would have to apply to the town planner, then the town council would have to determine if they were, you know, that base, but at this point, it's a building.
Okay. And it, was it your understanding that the proposed use, because I, I do, I do get that you got additional information. So outside of that permit, it seems though that use was somewhat provided to you. Um, would be classified under caregiver retail storage and table in?
No, so it's actually, um, registered caregiver cultivation is what it would be. However, um, it is a residential use, so we already knew what was in the building, just to follow up and answer your question because that building had burned down and that had been a use in that building since two thousand and seventeen, as far back as the file shows.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. Replacing the existing structure that had burned down, was this just a new permit for a new building?
So.
No, you go ahead.
Um, so because of the size of the lot and the eventual requirements needed for that outbuilding, um, one sixty-one of Dunkwood Road is plenty big enough to have a building of that size. So when the new building permit came in, we were, is it in the same spot as it was yet, but it was, it's a new structure?
Wasn't necessarily just replacing the one that had burned down.
So Mr. Bergendahl had come into the code office, um, or called, came in, came in and asked if he could put a basement on his building and a second floor and we would have no reason to deny him that privilege of doing so.
Any other questions from the board? Just want to follow up with that. So it just gets treated as a new building, not a replacement building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the reconstruction provisions that were referred to, the reconstruction, rebuild provisions deal with non-conforming structures. So you are allowed to rebuild and identify, or for example, to the extent that building was non-conforming, um, the setback or whatever, space involved, there are some allowances to rebuild. But from my understanding, it was, this is not, it is apparently replacing something that was there, but it also just meets the standards itself already. So now there was a space involved, standards, dimensional requirements.
Yeah, that was my question, whether you were replacing something that previously existed or whether, and I understand that the lot is big enough and the setbacks are such that you could put another structure on the, on the property, so long, I guess, as you're not, um, creating too many dwellings.
I think that it's important just to add that, um, the building getting, like, the expansion of the building is not the same as the expansion of the use.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, I, a little bit, uh, getting back to the suspension of the, you know, whether it's expansion of the use, um, or, or not, uh, I understand that, that difference, um, although, um, the, only partially, part of the interior layout of the building has been given. Um, is excuses, um, he doesn't need to under O C P regulations. But that would only apply up until the area of use allowed, that seven hundred and fifty square feet, I would imagine. So that leaves more of the building unexplained.
Is that not correct?
Yeah, and I'll defer to you on the specifics. I think, yeah, I think I understand what you're saying, which is essentially the first floor is a big old space, right? You're seeing it, we're saying he's gonna grow, you know, either for some growing. He's allowed a certain amount under your ordinance and it used word designated, right? So he'll have to designate some area at some point, they'll come up to the inspection process, I assume.
Right, but it's not designated at this point of the, on what, what we're seeing, there's nothing designated. That's right.
So anybody applying for an outbuilding for residential use in South Furrick, it wouldn't be typical that we would see a full layout of everything that they were gonna put in an outbuilding. So, for instance, if you applied for a garage or you put up a barn and there was an ADU upstairs, we would request that the ADU had a, a layout of what that would look like, the kitchen, the bedroom, the bathroom, the living room, however that was gonna be set up. But it wouldn't be typical to ask for, um, specifics of a layout of an outbuilding. It's not like it's a typical house that we would ask for the floor plan. We got exactly what I would expect to get for a layout of an outbuilding, for a building permit. This is typical.
Um, just to, to familiarize myself with the actual site. And I've, I have driven by a couple of times on the way to Dunkwood, um, is, there's, from what I've seen, there's like a building that's visible from the street and this, this proposed structure is sort of behind that. So it would, it would be on the, on the lot, there would be two structures. I don't know how substantive this is to making a decision here, just want to familiarize myself with the site. It's what would appear to be a single-family, uh, residence and there's this new structure going in that has an ADU and some other spaces.
I'm not really sure what you're asking.
I'm just trying to familiarize myself with what this.
Like the layout of the.
Yeah, like, like, is this the only building on the, uh, property or is there another one? And what is the use of that other one? Just, just to give a, a whole view of the lot itself.
Sure. So there's a single family home on, on the property and then there's an enclosed porch that has a retail store. Um, and then this new building is the ADU, the storage area and the, you know, um, cultivation. Um, and then there's a few sheds on the property as well, and I'm not sure the use of those sheds.
Yeah, let's, I just want to confirm my understanding.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? I, I just want for, for clarification, uh, this is all referring to a building permit twenty-four oh two, right? On this building? Is all oh two?
Everything that the ADU, the ADU.
But I mean, what we're discussing.
The structure of the building, the shell of the building, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Bayes, do you have any further comments or questions?
Uh, I do, uh, the discussion of use, uh, on a building permit. Uh, it's, it's very clear in our ordinance, uh, if I can find the right page. Uh, under one forty dash seventy dash E, application for a permit shall be accompanied by a plan accurately drawn, accurately drawn to scale, clearly showing a number for existing and intended use of each building and structure. I mean, it's, it's simple. It's a requirement of our, of our ordinance. It's on the application. It's a, you know, it's a required document at the end of the application. I'm not sure why that's become such a, uh, a difficult thing to talk circles around, you know? Uh, secondly, uh, if I could ask, uh, either Mr. McCabe or the attorney to clarify, let me give you this scenario from some of the things you said seem to be conflicting, I, or I interpreted them as conflicting. Uh, this building's built. Uh, a portion of it could be used for medical marijuana cultivation activities. The performance standard in our ordinances has a seven hundred square foot maximum. Uh, already on that property, uh, the store and another building that didn't burn for a total of about six hundred and forty square feet. So does that mean he can only put sixty square feet of activity in this forty-seven hundred square foot structure? Is that what, I believe that's what you just said, and I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
So for one, the basement is just a basement, nothing going in there, okay?
I'm not asking what each floor is gonna be used for. I'm asking what's the total square footage of marijuana activity that is allowed on that property, no matter what size building you go? So, uh, the licensing ordinance, which you rightly pointed out, applies, require. The performance standards, sir. That includes licensing. That's what I'm about. But I don't, I, you helped and advised us in workshops. You were part of this and the development of it and the intent of it. So I'm trying to get you to clarify for us. Is that the limit? Is seven hundred square feet the limit for any resident to have medical marijuana activities on their property, no matter what size building they have? Thank you. I was about to answer that question before you, before you clarified there. The, I wanted to read it so there's no confusion. Square footage limitations, a care, cannabis caregiver home occupation shall be carried on fully within the principal building or within a building or other structure or accessory to it and shall utilize at a maximum no more than seven designated square feet per license category. Or if you have two, uh, two licenses area, you can have up to twelve hundred square feet. So that's a very specific thing. It's, it's seven hundred designated square feet for a, um, and actually I should be talking to you as a chair. It's seven hundred, uh, square feet for, uh, uh, designated square feet for a cannabis caregiver home occupation, right?
Just for growing?
For growing, is what I understand. So it's, if you look at the categories of the licensing fees, medical marijuana, medical cannabis, registered caregiver license with no cultivation on site, have a certain, uh, fifteen hundred dollars, for example. Here, registered caregiver license cultivation onsite is three thousand. Um, and then the license exchange conversion, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. So those are different subuses that, that the town has identified. Um, so that is the principle. What I think I'm hearing is that there's a discussion about uh, an, an existing retail store on the property. That is a separate issue. I'm not saying it doesn't apply, but I, but to the extent that it is legally non-conforming or not, and I will say or not, because I think the town needs to review that and Jenny found determined today that that does never have to be on an application for the state. So that the only way that a registered caregiver, um, retail store is allowed, it's an opt-in category. I don't really want to spend too much time on this because it's actually not in front of you this evening. But it's a, it's an opt-in category and, and the town is not opted in for that area. Um, and so the only way it would be legally allowed to operate is if it was operating with municipal approval as of December thirteenth, uh, twenty eighteen. Right? So that's, that's, but that's a factual matter that the town will need to review to see if it ever did get municipal approval. There's, that term municipal approval is a defined term under state law, so within the actual, uh, the, uh, building permit, license, condition to use, whatever, it's gotta be for that specific purpose. So that's gonna be looked at. That's a separate issue from tonight. If, and I'm just saying if, because I don't know if it is or not. Then in my view, that would be exactly, it would be legally non-conforming and the statute says, you spell it, nominal pivot, one of those four types of uses from operating. Um, if it did meet that sort of legally non-conforming standard. So that's, that is an issue. It's, it's an enforcement issue for the town to review. I agree with that. But that's not the issue for, where we are tonight. Tonight, it's just the building permit, what can be used, to the extent that, um, and then the last thing I'll say, uh, that I actually, again, I agree with Mr. Bayes, and I think I answered the questions with the board member about this, is that the, the, the code officer does need to know the use. The use has to be part of an application so that the code officer can understand if that use isn't allowed use in that zone, for example. So I, I agree with that as well. Um, but to the extent that, that this particular applicant wants to go forward to get a license, they're gonna have to comply with this ordinance. And the town planner and the town council are gonna have to make that decision separately and that decision can be separately appealed to you. Um, and so that's a separate, you will.
Mr. Bayes, is that answered?
Yeah.
May not be satisfactory, but I think we're getting astray.
Yeah.
Because of just this structure rather than the activity that's being carried on.
Uh, I have, uh, one other comment to make is with the, again, you know, learning, I guess Thursday I learned that, you know, the new permit had been issued for the ADU, so that had remedied that. Uh, I would ask that if now that becomes the mixed use issue, under one forty dash twenty-one D, we have an ordinance about mixed uses with, now we've got two different things, the marijuana cultivation and an ADU in the same building. The mixed use ordinance talks about if any of those have square footage limitations, which they both do, that then the smaller of the two applies for the total mixed use. Not to complicate things, but that may be something that, uh, that the zoning board considers as well with the information that's, that's been provided. Hi.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that. Any thoughts on?
I previously.
My key tonight, and I answered that question. Mr. Chairman, would you like to?
Thank you.
Yeah, um, having read the the submissions, um, that was not raised, and if I understand correctly, there is a subsequent permit issued. That issue may be germane to that. But that has not been appealed, that is not before you, with respect to the issues before you. I think that, you know, there is a a governing appeal period and. Um, the issues that any appellant wants to put before you have to be identified, not necessarily, you know. With tremendous precision, but it's my understanding, having reviewed the. Appeal statement that the mixed use piece was not something that was appealed. And I could be wrong on that, but and I'm sure the applicant can address that, but. I don't believe it was raised in this appeal, it could be in subsequent appeals.
So you're telling us we don't need to address that?
I think you might want to give the appellant an opportunity to address that and perhaps the code officer too. But from my perspective, unless I'm mistaken, I don't believe that that was raised on appeal. And the time for raising issues of this particular permit that's before you has passed.
But it seems, Mr. Bates, that if you wanted to raise the issue, the, there was a second on the issue, um. This was the twenty four thirteen, was it? Jan, uh, February fourteenth? So we've got thirty days from the issuance of that permit to bring up. The issue you just mentioned. May take a little bit of digging to determine whether there is a conflict at all there. Whether one trumps the other, I don't simply nicely don't know. Appears you stuck the stars here, so.
No, I understand, I did not raise it in this appeal, but with the remedy of it. Made the question.
Do you have any other questions or comments to make before I allow the C E O or town attorney to comment again?
I do not, thank you.
Jen or Phil, do you have any?
I don't think we have anything further, thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. I'm going to close off the session at this point, and the the board will discuss amongst themselves. Take comments. Say, I'm going to start with you.
I tend to agree that the decision before us, and I think it's mentioned twice in the accounts, um, application is. Uh, to determine that, uh, permit. I believe twenty four. Oh, two of it? Twenty four oh two is invalid and void. On the surface, I'm not sure. That we are, um, able to revoke a permit after it's been issued. Looking at the main municipal association's handbook for. Going board of appeals. Uh, there's a section. In chapter six. That pertains to redication of permit or approval. And it basically advises generally that the issuing official or board should not attempt to revoke a permit or approval on the ground that the property owner. Is violating certain conditions of the approval unless authorized by a court order. It continues, however, where the issuing authority discovers that it is granted approval without. Discovers that it granted approval without authority. Or that the applicant made false statements on the application, which were material to the decision. It may have authority to revoke its approval after providing notice and an opportunity for a hearing. Um, presumably that being of the applicant for the permit.
Well, before we get into whether we can revoke a permit, can we dig into your reasons for. Feeling that the permit was invalidly executed or issued?
Uh, I I haven't quite come to that conclusion yet, I'm just merely stating that the opponent's, um, wish is for us to. In essence, revoke this permit.
And are you, you you suggesting that we should?
I am not.
Okay.
I I think that that's a decision that's. Gets into. Things that are beyond our qualifications, um, that being vested rights and equitable stuff.
Anybody else, John, have any feelings as to whether the C E O was appropriate in issuing this permit? No, see, I'm just wanting some clarification, well, I'm in Nevada, I want clarification on the that one. Thing here, um, as far as whether she. Issued it correctly, um, I I haven't heard anything that's that's made me think she did it incorrect. And Robert, how about?
Yeah, well, the only thing that's, um, that's still concerning me is is, um. The lack of information on the use of the bill, but. And, uh. And lack of information on. Still a little unsure as to square footage that's allowed for. For use of this building.
It's my understanding that. If you went in, let's say you own this property and you wanted to build a sixty by twenty four foot. Three-story structure and you had twenty acres and you were set back appropriately that you could, and it doesn't matter what uses, you could build that building. The use piece comes in after the fact, when you go in and you say, I want to. Uh, operate a, um, um. Care, medical care, medical marijuana care facility or R I M I care provider. At that point, there's some licensing requirements, and at that point, there's a need to know how much square footage is necessary, is necessary for the growth. Otherwise, I don't know that we really need to understand what goes on in the building, it's just. It's just a structure at this point. Now, I do understand that the building permit application or the instructions talks about. Or the use of of the building. Although it's a little bit, I think it's a little bit troublesome to me because it talks about. Showing a plan, I don't know how you show on a plan the existing and intended use of a building or structure. Um, but we've heard testimony from the code enforcement office that she was at least aware of the fact that it might be used. As a medical marijuana caregiver facility. I don't know that the use has anything to do with the issuance of a permit.
I think, yeah, I I think it has everything to do with. How our our how our ordinance is written, and the use has to be defined on the permit, it's. It's out there, it's on the permit application as a requirement and. This permit, and again, I I don't. Getting back to, I don't think we can satisfy the appellant here and void this permit, um, but I do find, I do find that. The permit itself is not complete and for.
In what, in what sense, I'm looking at the building permit, where?
Box, box nineteen. That's the, I think that's the use, is that the use box?
Those number of dwelling units present on the lot.
Oh, sorry, my note there that was, and I I referenced the subsequent permit, um. Twenty four thirteen. Versus twenty four oh two, there it's inconsistent, so it just, I scratched my head at that. I think. Personally. Again, uh, I believe the permit is lacking information. And I think that requesting that information and clarifying it from the building owner is. You know. Since we, since I, since I don't believe we can. Stop a permit that's already an issue. The way that that information can be gathered and complete in accordance with the ordinance. So that not only the. A butter they're aware, but the public as a whole. As to what the intention of this. Building permit is. I think that would be beneficial.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, may I?
Yes.
Um, I think there's been some legal. I don't want to say opinions, but there's been discussion of a couple of legal issues that I think are quite germane to this determination that I wouldn't mind just addressing briefly.
If you would.
Um, with respect to this board's authority to overturn a permit or not, I understand, um. What has been read from the N M A's manual talks about the issuing authorities' ability to revoke. And in this case, the issuing authority is the code enforcement officer, and so, um, that's really not. Before you, the code enforcement officer is not trying to revoke their own permit, so I think that that information isn't necessarily relevant here. I did want to address, um, the the notion of whether or not a use has is is relevant, if if the use. Is, um, a permitted use or not, I think that, um, I heard the code enforcement officers representative attorneys last year did say. That they were not saying that the use is not important, because I think it does have to be a permitted use before a permit can be issued. But what I have heard said, and, um, I I just want to make sure I'm getting it right, is that. The caregiving cultivation is a permitted use under the town's ordinances, um. That's what I heard, I heard him say, and I I I agree, that before a permit can be issued for any structure. Um, that there has to be a a determination that that use is a permitted use in the zone. And, um, I think I also heard the code officer, her representative say that, um, caregiving and. Um, cultivation in conjunction with that use is permitted in every town, every zone in town. Um, and I I can see why that's confusing, and if I could put a finer point on that, if I might. I think this board is typically used to looking at your news table, right, and you have the the grid and various zones and the various uses on the side, and you check and see, okay, is this permitted use? Caregiving is not mentioned, and I know that's a head scratcher, because usually you think, oh, if a use is not specifically. Enumerated, then you can't do it, because I think there's a provision in your ordinance that says omitted uses, if they're not specifically listed, you can't do them. But this is one of those, um, it's a bit of an exception, because as you probably have heard, that state law has come in and basically regulated. These uses and has told towns that you can regulate certain things and you can't regulate others. And under this, you know, I'm going to give you some legalese here, but twenty two M R S A two four two nine, uh, I think it's D. Basically says that you cannot, you being a town, cannot prohibit, um. Or exclude caregivers or, uh, limit their numbers, and so because of that. And I think that that's why the town allows caregivers and their associated activity of cultivation. Um, it's not listed in the in the table, but the reason why, and I think Philip alluded to this, is that if it were prohibited. Under that omitted use, then it would run afoul of state law that basically preempts municipalities from being able to, um. Zone them out, so that that's why in this case it might be a bit of a head scratcher, because you don't see that use in your news table.
Um, ma'am, so. As far as putting a use on a permit, for example, if I'm in. And if if I'm in B one and there is a use that requires some sort of planning board review. If I come and I put. Come in for an app to to get a permit, and then I don't have that use on there. It doesn't provide enough information for the code enforcement officer to make a determination as to whether there is, they can issue the permit. On their own authority or defer it to another board in some manner, whether it's site plan, minor site plan or major site plan. So how is that? Not knowing the use and issue before issuing this permit, how was that determination made?
I think you're absolutely right, you look at the application, you're right, it says, hey, what zone are you in, you have to check the box, right? And because of that, it's because the code officer does have to make a determination that that use is permitted. And I would argue, I I I I'm assuming that box fifteen, to your point, is the description of that use, right, so or description of the project. So what I think you need to determine while you're making a decision from an evidentiary standpoint, meaning if the record supports this conclusion. Is was the use. Known to the code enforcement officer evidently, and, um, while it may not say so on this application. Was there knowledge by the code enforcement officer of what the proposed use was, what it was before, what it was going to be, and if it was. An allowed use in that. So.
I guess that, and I I think we have part of that answer, but if we could ask that question directly of the code enforcement officer, I think that would be good for the record.
Okay, and we open it back up again, and Jen, I think she, I think she talked about the fact that she had conversations with. The contractor and she was told that it was going to be, uh, for a medical marijuana caregiver, but Jen, could you add something?
Yeah, sure, so, um, when the building burned down, we knew the use of the building at that time. Um, when Eric Bergendahl came, um, to the office and we started talking about the rebuild, uh, sorry, rebuild. Me, um, myself and Eric Bergendahl, who's sitting right here, um, had multiple conversations of the use of that building and what it would be. Um, as a grown up, and that's what we need to know. So I did know the use of.
Sorry, as of what?
As as it was done, so, structure. Not grown up, fully functioning building, grown up. We knew what it was going to be, he was very clear on what was going to be in the building for us. We knew that once the A D U, um, you know, L V two thousand and three passed, all the new, you know, ordinances needed to play, that he would eventually want to do an A D U. Um, and he's here, you can ask him, we've had several conversations on the use of the building. We knew it was going to be for his medical marijuana business, be careful that's a word in. And, um, also, we also knew that potentially further down the line, he was going to have an A D U in the building, so the town definitely knew. The full use of that building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you satisfied with that answer?
Yeah, I think that Phil's, you know, again, like. Having that, all that information in writing, certified by the landowner on the. Completed permit app would have, I think it would have gone a long way in this situation, just as a hindsight twenty twenty type thing. Um, but.
So maybe another box on building permit application about use, whether it's going to be a residential structure or commercial, yeah.
No, it's not public, uh, here, but I wanted to just follow up, and actually it gets directly to your point, which is. I agree, so that if you look at the building permit application form, um, section thirteen. Has that general use provision, it's general, it's not a specific, but it's a project description, and you have to click whether it's residential, commercial. Um, that sort of thing, and then there's an opportunity to provide additional description, it's a, uh, which includes dimensions, so it suggests you're getting into the actual building, which is what she's looking at. Um, so I agree, you, that could be potentially added to there if you wanted to have, uh, what specific use, uh, is being applied for, but I think that's. The way I read this, that's the general use box, and then Jen testified and wrote you right, that then she followed up with a conversation to determine the specific.
Yeah, I've been looking at, I mean, the, um. The recent. Building application, yeah, residential in part of the description, uh. The twenty twenty two building permit was commercial.
It was incorrect, correct?
Also, that the more recent application says. Box seventeen says there's. Not more than one use of existing on this property, but clearly there is. Isn't that great? Is it, I I mean, the residence and it's the medical marijuana business. So there's more room on use on the property.
Are you, I, so, I'm sorry, you, you're talking about the caregiver, the caregiver. Bro. In this business building.
The building permit application asks about the property in general, I see what you're saying. And it says, box seventeen, there's more than one use existing on the property. It's kind of no. Sure.
Mr. Chairman, are you okay if I answer that?
Sure.
Okay, perfect, um, so what you're seeing there, is there one, more than one use on the property, so we define. Residential or commercial use for that, for that, is there a residential and a commercial use, is there more than one use on that property, so if you are a business owner in town with a commercial site.
So if you are a business owner in town with a commercial site, we would expect that, is there more than one use on that property? No, it's commercial use. These both are considered residential uses. There is no commercial use on that property. This does not qualify for a commercial use.
Does it qualify as a home occupation?
I think under the licensing ordinance, it is, yeah, it is considered, it's called a home occupation caregiver.
Okay, so it's a home occupation.
Right, like I said, it's not actually zoned, as as your attorney was saying, it doesn't show up as a use category. So it's a, this is a licensing issue. It is a little confusing, because there's, it's a licensing issue in the zoning ordinance, but.
Home occupations are listed as a, on the land use table.
This is treated as something different. These are caregiver, uh, caregiver grow.
The caregiver.
My understanding.
So what he's saying is.
I'm having trouble understanding why caregiver grow is in a home occupation as compared to. I mean, I had a, I had a home occupation as both, or I, you know, I said, and. You know, and many people I know have home occupations. That would seem to be a second use of the property I had to, you know, get permitted to. In my own home occupation, so I'm I'm just wondering why. So this is treated differently.
Mr. Chair, um, so actually, Mr. Bergendahl was in, um, he had his caregiver license. And he was, how do I want to say this? Um, he was already um, a registered caregiver within the use of his building before. Well, um, registered caregiver home occupation came into play, which was this past year that that happened. He started in two thousand and seventeen. So anybody that was a registered caregiver before, and maybe, maybe Leah would be better to answer this for you. But anybody that was a registered caregiver before, um, wouldn't need that home occupation. Permit, especially whose.
Now, we're gonna get, my opinion would be what difference does it make? I mean, we knew, code enforcement officer knew what what's just gonna be operated there. They knew there's a residential structure in the front, and that there was gonna be an ADU with marijuana caregiver growing in that. And what, do we need more? I don't know that this was intended to deceive anybody. And it's, again, it may be just one of those things where it just really could expand on the uh, the application. To be a little more specific in terms of, um, it talks about use on the property. And I understand your, your, your question, is a home occupation a separate use from a residential structure? Is it a folk building, even though it's a home occupation, is that a different use than residential? Actually, what I hear the town saying is, no, we, you got residential or you got commercial. And in their mind, this is both residential, and therefore it's only one use.
But what I heard was, the the use was in existence prior to the uh, home occupation ordinance. So therefore it would be conform, yeah, it would be legally non-conforming, if you will, not requiring a.
I guess I still don't understand why that makes a difference when you're looking at the building permit application.
Because in, in, in my, in my understanding would be that it's important in that a major home occupation, for example. Would require an R five of site plan review.
But we want to discuss the fact that they knew it was gonna be a medical caregiver, and that's our, that's authorized by state law. And we don't have any control over that.
Not saying it's not legal, but it should still go through.
It's authorized by state law, but it's regulated by town ordinance, it's, it's not.
Well, the use, the extent of the use is regulated by the town, the fact that they can do it.
Yeah, but it.
Is state law, is state mandated.
Yes, but where? Seems to be covered by town ordinance.
I'm not sure what your question is. My question is, what difference does it make if it's not on the building permit application? If the code enforcement officer already knows that that's the case? And we've heard testimony about it tonight. I, I understand it can cause confusion, and maybe from the perspective of a woman who's, who's got an interest. It might, might be, it might be important, and perhaps the permitting process can be adjusted to accommodate that. But we're here to discuss the fact that the permit hasn't been issued, hasn't been issued in enough, because it is the question of what.
Thank you, guys.
Do you want to add?
Uh, I'm happy to answer, I think, the question that was posed, but um, I'll do so through the chair.
We have one, one question.
Sure. I think, I think one of the questions, um, perhaps remember, is a teacher eager? Had asked was about whether or not towns can regulate caregivers. And I think the answer to that question is, yes, they can, but in this case. The town, for whatever reason, I, and I'm just the hired gun for tonight, so I can't go into figuring out why that is. But there hasn't been a determination to regulate it from a zoning perspective, what districts caregivers can be in or not. Okay, I think the question is, can, as a general proposition, towns do that? I think the answer is, they can, but here, the town has chosen not to. And because they're not listed, and this goes back to that kind of circular argument I was making before. Is that because they are not listed as permitted uses? The implication is, under your ordinance, that they would be omitted uses. Because there's a provision in the ordinance, I think, that says, if it's not specifically listed, you can't do it. But if that were the case, and they were omitted uses from all zones, then that would run afoul of state law. Because you cannot prohibit caregivers, um, the number or or caregiving, okay? Can you regulate and say, okay, the town, you know, the town's legislative body says, we only want caregiving in X, Y, and Z zones? I think they could do that, but you haven't, right? And because of that, to say, well, they're not a listed use, so they're prohibited everywhere, would run afoul of that provision, state law.
Is, is, is that what our ordinance says, or is it to the, and I, I'm not sure. But I, I feel like I recall reading somewhere that it's. It would be a most similar use in the table or something like that.
And and that may be, that may be the case, but what I'm trying to say is that this town has not chosen to limit. Caregiving useless to only certain zones, right? And because of that, they are permitted, because otherwise it would be a prohibition, right? Um, so, so that's all, the only point I'm trying to make is that, can the town decide at some point, they want to regulate caregiving in particular zones? Yes, they have not done so, and therefore they're permitted. At least that's my perspective. I don't want to overspeak. I, I think the code officer, if you want to make sure we're on the same page there. Um, you know, because I don't want to say something inadvertently that is inconsistent with the, with the code enforcement officer's approach.
I, I understand that point. I guess my question is, um. Why is this not considered a home occupation, which is a listed use in the land use table?
Um, I'm not sure, and and I'm looking at the land use table, and I might just be missing it. But I think, I'm not seeing home occupation, and it could very well be there, it's not under age, because I think.
Minor, uh, like home occupations and. And major home occupation, they're two different.
Oh, I see, major and minor, I totally get it.
Yes.
Because I think in this case, they are, it's a special kind of use, this caregiving is a special kind of use. Um, and so they may be subject to additional kinds of review, but in this case. Caregiving, um, is a permitted use throughout the town. And i- if the code officer wants to jump in, I, again, I don't want to, because I'm not the regular town attorney, I don't know what the process is. I want, I think it makes sense for the code office to address that, which is.
Bill, could you, uh, uh, jump in here and let us know?
Sure, yeah, I'll just come back to what I originally said, which is, the town has adopted a licensing requirement. Under one forty dash sixty-seven point three, so that is a license. And that regulate, that is something that's required for uh, caregivers, right? So they're gonna have to go, it's a different process, it's not part of the building permit process. It, it's actually now, it's actually written as you apply to the town planner, right? So it's a whole different process. So you, you go to the town planner, the town planner makes a determination. Um, it then goes to the town council, and the council decides whether or not to issue a license. So that's the way that process works, it does use the term, um, home occupation, but it says, but here's how you do it, right? Here's how you're gonna apply, and you're gonna go through this process. So it's a different regulatory regime for that type of use, that's the way I read.
Is it a home occupation?
To me, it's a home occupation for, for licensing purposes.
So in two thousand and twenty-three, we'll just give you a little history here. In two thousand, uh, twenty-three, the town established a home occupation for medical caregiver licensing. So at that time, Mr. Bergendahl had been in business to the town's knowledge for six years. And so like Mr. Flingstrom said earlier, we consider that illegal non-conforming. So we would never have him come in front of the board to do that home occupation at that time. Um, it's not something that a town would require, um, and if we did need to require it, it's a conversation that, um. Me and the town attorney will have to have outside of the meeting, because it's, it's really not pertaining to what's in front of you here. But that is how we go about it. There, I mean, um, I can tell you that one sixty-one comes, it's not the only one that came in before that. Um, new ordinance in two thousand and twenty-three, and we have not required them to come in front of us either.
Don't think you feel any better, Robert?
Or worse, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I guess I would just say, sort of, the. They kind of pair on, is then, it's a separate license, it's a separate regulatory process, the extent it applies is the code officer, the town planner. And then it'll be an enforcement issue, so to the extent they determine that, that the supplies are not, or you, you know, that's a separate issue from the building permit. Which is in front of you today. That will be regular, that's, that is a different regulatory regime, if you will, that has its own permit and approval and appeal process.
Yeah, I think the heartache for some of the members here is the fact that there's no specification on the building permit application. Or your building permit, that, as to what the ultimate use is going to be. And maybe that's something that could be straightened out administratively.
Yeah.
Um, in, in the, in the, in the paperwork, but I, I hope I'm not speaking incorrectly, but I think that's.
That is, that's what I.
What I, that's what I'm hearing.
I think, um, I think. I have all the questions answered that I answered.
Don't we have any?
I have a general question about our process. Um, okay, he has four items here that he had in his appeal. Now, do we have to find a complete agreement to all four items? Or if we, is there a certain amount of them that validate them? I see your light.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that. I think, um, best practice is, is that you have four bases of appeal. And, um, you want to go through and make findings and conclusions on each of those. And I'm more than happy, I mean, you see them laid out, you know what they are. And I think that, um, it's important to, as I say, make findings and conclusions on both. And I'm more than happy to be your scribe and to draft those findings, um, if that would be helpful.
Well, why don't, why don't we go through those and, um, uh, focus a little bit on, on, on those issues? Um, so the first one is, uh, the applicant suggests that it's invalid due to approves an accessory dwelling unit. ADU that was not applied for. Now, I'm just looking at the building permit. I don't see that. Well, initially, the permit had, it suggested that a description of the thought project. It was a twenty-four by sixty-six house building. And then it said, uh, six thirty-two square feet accessory dwelling unit, but that was scratched out. Um, and initialed by, uh, Jen on one thirty-one twenty-four. So with the initial permit, it would have been for a twenty-four by sixty-six foot house building. Which we've heard seemingly not the dimensional requirements of the, of the, of the town.
Is it, is there any way, we, is there any way to, I mean, well, we'll make these conclusions based on not all these applications. But the testimony that we've heard in front of us, and is there any way to, uh. Know or, you know, and cap, not encapsulate, um, capture in our conclusion on number one. That there was discussion about this subsequent permit, which although not in front of us today as. An official appeal item by means, um, it, it does provide more information related to that ADU. Um, I don't see why we ought to ignore that as it being, it is right in front of us. That is acceptable.
I, I think it is, and arguably, you could find that that second permit with the information provided, and that it was, um. Subsequently issued, in essence, moots the first permit with respect to the ADU in any event. Because in essence, it's almost, it's not that it's been rescinded, it's just mooted because a new permit on that particular. Um, subject of the ADU has been issued.
Everybody follow that, and, and you understand? One more, one more. What Leah's saying is, there's been a subsequent permit application and a subsequent building permit issued. That specifically addressed the ADU issue, and thereby made point one on the applicant, applicants. Um, no, because we've got a new document that authorizes that.
And, and, does that mean we should go, because on the first permit. Uh, box nineteen, uh, identified two dwelling units presently under law, and that is a permit, it's down one.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to, to focus on that, the, what the applicant suggests is that. The issuance of a building permit for an ADU was, was not applied for. Uh, and therefore that original permit is invalid. I think two things occurred, one is we heard testimony, number one, that the code enforcement officer and the owner. Agreed that there was going to be an ADU, um, authorized. But secondly, and more importantly, the code enforcement subsequently issued a permit for an ADU. Based on a building permit that did have all the requirements and did specify that it was for an ADU. And that was the building permit, um, brought in and submitted on January thirtieth.
Mr. Chairman, I do think it would be helpful, though, just to address that issue about the one versus two. Because regardless of if it was the second permit, or the first permit, or the old ordinance, or the new ordinance. You can only have an accessory, you can only have one. So I think it would be helpful for the findings to just make a finding on that, whether or not there was any two existing dwellings or only one.
That, yes, it's my question here, why, why that information's changed, and whether there is actually one or two.
Okay, maybe you could ask the code enforcement officer, how many dwelling units were on the property prior to issuance of this permit?
So there was one, um, when the application came in, if you look in my packet of, um, that I gave you. Um, you're gonna find that, let me just get to that spot. When Mr. Ber- uh, Bergendahl came in on January thirtieth, that is one of the things on the permit, I just touched something, I'm sorry. I'm in Zoom, okay, um, that, that was one of the things that we had him correct. But again, his contractor could not do that, because he was not the acting agent of that permit. So you're gonna see that Mr. Bergendahl crossed it out and initialed next to it and put in number one. Because there's one dwelling unit on that property prior to the ADU.
Answer your question on. Okay, so it, it would seem that we've gotten over the hurdle to number one. Approves an accessory dwelling unit that was not applied to us, so, um, I think. Everybody satisfied that we, we don't need to be concerned with that one?
So should we have a motion related to it, and a vote on?
Have what was found there?
I I would suggest that you do, just to have, I've got it in teeth.
Uh could I have a motion to? To recognize that a accessory dwelling unit was applied for during the permitting process. And for the twenty-four oh oh two building permit.
Or even just to, Mister Chairman, even to make it easier, you could simply say, um I move to deny the first round of appeal.
To make it easier for people? Okay, I I would move that um the first ground for appeal um denied.
I'll second that.
In favor? I.
I.
So four and four to nothing. Number two, approves an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Set that to the licensing? Nowhere, we we aren't, we aren't deciding on use.
Is everybody in agreement?
My understanding is that permit uh, the permit approves. An outbuilding. And um. We understand that the use of that outbuilding will be. Seven hundred twenty square feet for an accessory dwelling unit. Uh the remainder of that level would be residential storage. Basement would not be. Any use, so I imagine it would be utility space of sorts. And the second floor is not fine. Explicitly, it doesn't. The permit doesn't state um. The permit itself, and I apologize as. That note from the owner. Or sorry, from the code office, they're saying the first, was the first floor is intended to be used for the caregiver facility.
Yeah, I believe that's what. I don't know that it's written anywhere, can you help?
She has it in her memo. Yes, yeah. Yeah, sorry, yes, second, second floor, seven hundred twenty square feet for the ADU, the remainder residential storage. The first floor. Um. There's, the permit doesn't explicitly mention a. Square footage amount for on the first floor for that registered caregiver. Um space. So I don't think with the information we have, we can determine that it does approve an expansion of a non-conforming use. Because we don't know what. Final square footage of use will be.
Mister Chairman, if I can just frame the issue up a little bit, um I think what's really critical here is to determine whether or not this is. A non-conform use, I know that that is the um the presentation by the appellant, this phrase that said that. Um you know, this is a non-conforming use, I think you've heard the code office, on the other hand, say that this is a conforming use, so. I think before we start asking ourselves, is this an expansion of a non-conforming use? We first have to determine whether it is a non-conforming use or whether it's a conforming use. Because if you find that it is a con- a conforming use, which I believe is what the code enforcement officer based her decision on. Then you need to go no further to, you know, to understand if you've expanded it. If you determine it's conforming, then you don't need to do that analysis.
Well, we've heard lots of testimony um from town council that. It is a permitted, that um medical marijuana caregiver grooming is a permitted use in this area. Uh we don't know anything more than the fact that it is a permitted use, so I don't know. How can it suggest that it's a non-conforming use? Um. Any other thoughts?
I'm still, it's it's. Getting back to this home occupation issue, which has its own, you know. That what I'm not seeing is a, I I I guess I'm not seeing where the carve-out is. For medical marijuana to be an exception to a major home occupation. Why, it it is the only thing. Only occupation I know of in this town is not, it would be. Pulled out of a major home occupation and therefore not subject to the rules about major home occupation.
Bob, it's in your argument, I mean, and I understand completely it's in your argument with the town for how they're registering it, not how they're interpreting it. The fact is that, the fact is that it isn't.
Well, but that uh under current. As Sossia said. It is not a public major home op, it is not American. It was listed as a home occupation. And if it's listed as a home occupation, that doesn't it fall under. The home occupation table in terms of land use. And then that's um that is restricted to that general. Um. You know, if it if it's about seven hundred fifty square feet. Um. If it's about five hundred square feet, it turns it into a major home occupation, that's why the. There's a break between major and minor. And then.
I guess the way I get over that is. The code enforcement officer is not authorizing any use of this property other than to build a building. And what goes on in the inside is going to be. A separate issue and a separate process to get a license for it, so. What she has done is simply authorized the creation of a space and not the expansion of a use.
I think to add on to that, at the end of any. Uh book, to close out any building permit is a requirement to obtain a certificate of occupancy. And that, that, and that is, at the dis, you know, that that is up to the code official. To issue and determine, has everything been done correctly and? Is what's going to go on here um. Appropriate and legal, I suppose. So um. I think I I it's super difficult because the permit itself. That isn't show a full picture, in my opinion, and I think that's one been the hardest thing for me in this. This uh appeal um. But I think we have, the town has um. An opportunity through the inspection process to make sure that. All the concerns that aren't, all the items that aren't. Explicit in here, such as the square footage used for each use. To make sure that the final use, the final. Use is, I suppose. It's it's hard, I mean, for me, it's hard, for me, it's hard decision, but um. Uh yeah, that's.
Any thoughts, John?
Once again, I, my interpretation, what I've heard this evening. Is that they did not misinterpret the the law or the the procedure as it exists. Um and what we're being asked to do is say they did it wrong, I haven't heard anything that says they did it wrong. So that's, that's, you know, once again, um the usage is a separate um. Uh a separate interpretation, a separate process from what I've heard this evening.
I guess I I would move to uh suggest that the code enforcement officer did not. Um approve an expansion of a non-conforming view. I'll second that. Any further discussion on that point? Home favor? Well. Uh number three, the building permit application was not complete. And I, I. I think that is in reference. That again has the, I think the the gist of it was the existing and intended use of each building or structure wasn't specified. Um. There's also a comment that the applicant made about. Uh the number of uses on the property, and we've discussed that quite a bit.
I think that the app, the permit. That is being, that is in question. I think that the initial application, I. There are boxes that are empty. So from a simple question of. Whether it's complete or incomplete. I believe that it's incomplete.
Which one's the, which box would be the box number one?
Box seventeen, there's a report, it asks for a use, it's not listed there. And then uh the lot coverage. Uh boxes incomplete as well.
Which which box is it?
Uh sorry, point two.
Okay, thank you.
There's still one in my copy. Well, seventeen on the copy I have, so is there more than one use existing on the property and they've marked no? And we talked a little bit about that and how that's unclear because it would seem that the town only. Has two choices there, it's either residential or commercial, and both are considered residential.
Yeah, I mean, I. It's merely face value, there's a box, there's a box that's incomplete.
And then lot coverage. Um. And that's a little bit hard, but um. Plus or minus. And zone, plus or minus. Given the fact that we know the acreage and we know the shape of the building. Uh I think we can. Extrapolate and make a determination on the uh. Um on the, that the lot coverage isn't an issue, I think that's the purpose of this particular. Uh. Particular question, I want to be sure that you don't have so much coverage on the lot that it's. Affecting during the gymnasium, but when you have a twenty acre parcel and you have a fifteen hundred square foot building. That doesn't, wouldn't seem to be a big issue to me.
So you're saying since the, that the uh comparison between. Yeah, the lot size and the total square footage of the building. Coverage coverage.
Yeah, and they didn't require it on the. The other uh one also, just the subsequent permit, and I guess the the third point I would make is. They're replacing an existing building. And this is. Yes, about the same size, at least the footprint of the face of the earth is about the same size. I agree, there seems to be some holes in the, in the, in the application of. Criticism, so that, but I don't know that that. To make a permit um. Um permanent valid. Any other thoughts?
I. Yeah, I. I don't think the admissions rise to a level.
I just, I try to make a motion to. Um. Um the building, the CEO did not air in issuing the building permit. Um even though there were some minor um incompletions on the building permit application. That we find those de minimis in nature. We will that.
Yes, and and just to be clear, I I think I follow the basis for that, de minimis and. The record otherwise supports that the governing regulations or requirements were met.
Right, so record as in what we've heard here today, okay?
Well, they gave a de minimis and the testimony and the the materials that we have. Um suggests that all of um. Information required by the code enforcement had or have been, have been met.
And Mister Chairman, if I may just explain that a little bit, that because this board is reviewing and we're throwing Latin around, de minimis de novo. Because this board is reviewing this de novo from scratch, you're, you're determining whether or not the code enforcement officer aired. But you're not limiting your inquiry to the papers that were before the code officer at the time. Tonight, you've heard testimony and you've looked at other documents, and that's perfectly appropriate, so. You're not looking whether she aired just based on what she had before her, it's in the totality of what you've heard tonight, and so that's another reason why. Um I just want to make sure that you understand that that's, you know, looking at those other things is perfectly appropriate.
Thank you. Uh we have a motion, and I think John would do second one. All in favor? I. The fourth point, the applicant uh owner is not compliant with. Section one forty dash sixty-seven point three performance standard that local licensing required for. Medical cannabis registered caregiver. Any thoughts on that one?
Was that a separate, as they explained early on, that was a separate entity, like that's not. Kind of just permit process.
I agree. Any other thoughts on that?
Basically, that's not in our approach.
Right, I, that's, from my understanding is there's been no decision. Uh permit uh applied that we're looking at, and therefore. She wouldn't have made a decision, and therefore it wouldn't be an error. But this is something that um, Mister Verdi Paul is gonna, you need to engage in sometime in the future. And any thoughts?
Um.
Yeah, I have a motion that the CEO has not made an error. Initiate a building permit based on non-compliance with section one forty dash sixty-seven point three. For the performance standards and local licensing requirements for medical cannabis registered caregivers. For the further comment that that is a permit application that we um, uh the owner of one sixty.
Sixty-one.
One sixty-one, um a gun for the road is gonna have to apply to the town.
Next second man, so.
Any other conversation or thoughts? All in favor? I. For his turn. Would be one all encompassing.
You said.
Motion to deny the appeal. In that the code enforcement officer did not. in that the code enforcement officer did not air in issuing the building permit twenty-four dash zero zero two. Have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Oh, just one second, I should say this. Because under state statute, you have, I think, is it seven, ten days to issue your written decision? I am more than happy to draft that, but I think what I might, I don't know when you're going to meet next, are you able to meet within a week? Those boards don't do that, I can certainly generate those findings through your consideration. But if you are not, I would say to hold in advance the final motion so that, that that clock is not ticking. I don't know what this board usually does in that regard, but I'm more than happy to draft those findings through your consideration, I just don't know when you can meet again.
Typically, we've met the parking lot. Is everybody gonna be around within the next, in the next week?
I am going to be away starting in second March, next Saturday, for a week.
Okay, so starting on the second.
Which is the next Saturday.
You probably won't have them to me this week.
Listen, I'm here to sort, if I can get those to the ground, if you want me to, I could, I could.
People be able to get together sometime on, like, Friday? Four o'clock, five o'clock, but I'm already tired, so I, I got flexibility.
All right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So what, what's my deadline? I have a deadline, Jordan.
Let's say Friday at three o'clock.
You will have them by Friday at noon, now, is that, no, I'm kidding, I'll get them to be as quickly as I can, but.
And I'll, I'll get you my email, and then what I will, I'll reach out to, review, coordinate a time to meet here in the parking lot and vote on, Jen is supposed to, the town hall open on Friday?
Actually, if you establish a time, I'd be happy to meet here. And we can go to the first floor, and we can come up here.
It's four o'clock, four thirty, what's, what's a good time for people?
Can it work from the beginning?
About, about four o'clock on Friday afternoon.
That's devotion, four o'clock on Friday.
That's the way we are here in South Carolina.
Okay, so I didn't mean to interrupt your last vote, so go, go forward and take your vote, I apologize for that.
So we have a motion on the table that's been seconded, that the code enforcement did not air in issuing building permit twenty-four dash zero zero two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the, your appeal's been denied. I will tell you, you have forty-five days from tonight, clear?
Yeah.
Which you could bring an appeal. It would seem that your real issue has to do with the marijuana growing on the, on the property, and I don't know that we really had much to do with that tonight, and that's going to be a subsequent issue that you can deal with the town on. But I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight, and we've got a couple other agenda items that we'll take care of at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board, appreciate the discussion and looking forward to some of the licensing and getting in place with the town, and I think that did clarify a lot of things for me, so I'm not disappointed, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Clark, can I also say something?
You may.
I also want to thank the board because I do think that there's a couple spots that can be improved on our building permit, so it's terrible when it comes up in setting like this, but it's also great that we can move forward and fix those issues too, so thank you to the board, and thank you to Mr. Bates as well.
Thank you. Do you have any minutes to begin the news program, or they, they were all done in the parking lot, much?
Last July or so, yeah.
Could we do some member comments before we adjourn here?
Sure.
Real fast.
Want to go off the record?
No, no, not at all, so, to my, to my understanding, the South Florida doesn't have any bylaws for the zoning board field, they have some bylaws for the planning board and also town council. And from what I, what I've read, it's it's within our discretion, maybe you can, it's within the going, the board's discretion to generate those bylaws for the VBA and also approve them without, without the legislature.
Yeah, and, and your, your town attorney can weigh in on this, but my understanding is with bylaw, those are not ordinances, those are not things that the legislative body has to weigh in on, that's, that's something that essentially are the traffic stops of your own procedure.
So my, my intent bringing this up is I think that and I know that we're all super busy, we meet infrequently, this is my first time. But I think maybe putting in front of us, I don't know, three to five months ahead, something for us to think about, getting something in place so that there is procedures for, that are a little more defined for not only our operations, but also within that purview are the forms that the applicants fill out to submit their appeals. And I think it would be an interesting exercise, at least to just, you know.
I just want to clarify, I mean, we get that form when people do appeal something, or, or, so what, what beyond that do you, do you suggest?
I guess, I guess just looking at it and the form itself and seeing how, what works about it, what doesn't, like, where, where, for example, what more information would we have liked to see on this, if anything? And also just procedural.
I believe that forms based on state, on MMA standards, right, I think that's something that's downloaded right from the main municipal association. That was my impression, we've worked through this in the past, so I just want to make, you know, see what, what, what do you want clarified, what do you, what do you suggest?
I don't particularly have anything in mind at the moment, but once going through the exercise of looking over it.
Right, you've been through it a lot. And also, your situation was kind of unique on it, because I know, you know, I've been on this board for like ten years, and we haven't really fallen through any cracks with that form, so, so I'm, you know, I'm open to, you know, whatever you think, but
Yeah.
if you had an experience.
I guess from, I guess the other thing would just be the, the bylaw then, and I know it would, it doesn't need to be any, anything much more than looking at, for example, the planning board procedures and making sure that the process that where the zoning board feels is doing is at least similar in mine, so it's just consistency.
Are you submitting this planning board bylaws?
Not in any great detail, no.
Have you even seen them, do they exist?
They, they do exist, yeah.
Do they, do they exist?
I mean, I, I pulled up and made a copy of chapter one forty of our own zoning, which is the, the appeal process.
Yeah.
But that, that is here, it does give us, it does suggest that we have rulemaking authority. The board, you know, provided by rule. Any related, any matter relating to the conduct of a hearing, provided that any rule may be waived by the chairman. And thus my little conversation at the beginning about how it was gonna proceed, but I'd be happy to, you see something out there.
I think it would be less of the next, for me, less of, you know, making something and more of looking at other towns and seeing what they have out there and just doing a comparison to see, okay, you know, this looks like something good to add, or like that, I, I have nothing in particular in mind else.
You can ask Phil or Zach if they've got a you know, template for board of charter or bylaws for, and, and just an associate of, of a body like ours. And we could take a look at that.
For MMA, by them.
Yeah, I think the, the MMA has some just example from other towns, and that's sort of what got me thinking about it and reading through that, the ZBA manual that they put out. But anyway, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up and
Sure.
put it up, not, not even on the close radar, but just let you know. I'll be doing some research.
We need it to, to find a sample for us, and, and also take a peek at the application. Do you see anything on there that you think we need to put on? I don't see why we can't, it's, it'll be a form that we can manipulate if we want.
Yep.
I motion this, Sam, that it's on the zoning board.
I'm motion.
So will. All right, any other comments?
Do we have to officially close the meeting?
Yeah, you have to adjourn.
I don't know that there's any other businesses, somebody want to motion to adjourn?
Well, before, you, you do have contact information for everybody, everybody's clear.
I don't know, because I have Roberts.
I can actually send that out, but it's, I saw on the group message that you got with all the documents, yeah.
Or last Friday.
Just if anything changes for Friday.
All right. Good.
I, yeah, I motion to adjourn the meeting of February twenty-sixth.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.